Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Lacey Parks Culture and Recreation Board meeting. It is June 12th, 2023 at 5:30 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the agenda as written.
Motion to approve it.
Okay. It's been moved into seconded. Any discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the agenda as written, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Introductions and announcements for this evening. Would you like to start us off?
Sure. Hi, I'm Jen Burbage, Director of Parks Culture Recreation for the City of Lacey.
I'm Hillary Dykstra, Commissioner Dykstra.
I'm Bill Fosbury, Commissioner.
Wendy Goodwin, Chair, Commissioner of Lacey Parks Culture Recreation. Online, we have Commissioner.
Commissioner Aaron Wheeler.
Sarah Smith, Parks Culture Recreation.
Do we have anyone online other than what we see before us?
Currently, we do not know.
Thanks, Sarah. Are there any announcements for us this evening, Jen? Public comment for this evening? And I didn't see any in our packet for.
Yeah.
I have none.
I'll condense this.
And so we're going to go to Agenda Item Number Five, Old Business, everyone's tried and true favorite, the 2023 LPCR Comprehensive Plan, and this is an actionable item, so Jen.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Goodwin. So, as you know, tonight, you have set a special meeting to look at, hopefully, final action of this board for the Parks Culture Recreation Comprehensive Plan update for 2023. I really appreciate the opportunity to show you the updates and dive into a little more detail than what, you know, we've been able to do lately. So what we'd like to do is, I've got some slides to zip through. I will, you've seen some of them before, so I will just forward through the ones quickly that you've already seen and get to kind of our list of things to do tonight. And then what we're going to do is go through section by section after that of the comp plan, and I will bring up the copy that's in your packet, and then we'll pause at the end of each section, and Sarah is going to bring up the new design format so that you can see it in that format and what it'll look like. We really want the commissioners to go for content tonight and not the little design things. So, for example, we're still finessing the table of contents. We want to do that very, very last because we don't want to have to do it over again. So there's a few things that we'll be putting the final touches on after this meeting to get it to the Planning Commission, but it won't be anything of content. So hopefully, the board can trust us on those little, you know, page numbers and those types of things, appendices and whatnot. So I'll start with the slides. I'm going to share my screen. I am going to zip through some of the sections, like I said, but please, if you have a question or something doesn't make sense, just stop me. And because these are really important things to make sure that the commissioners are on the same page with. So, yes, we are going to zip through, but just because there's a lot, but at the same time, we will pause whenever necessary. Okay, so as you know, we are here for the Comprehensive Plan update for parks. We talked before about why we do a comprehensive plan. The one thing that wasn't on here before in the slides that I added is making sure that we continue our eligibility for our CO grant opportunities. In addition to all of these other reasons, we already went over who the team is updating. We went through the city's mission and the Parks Culture Recreation Vision, which is in the Comprehensive Plan. We also had looked at some of these interesting facts about Lacey and just the growth that we've experienced. We did give an overview of what, you know, our department consists of and some of the key partnerships and amazing facilities that we're so proud of. We talked about some of the benefits of Parks Culture Recreation. You'll also find quite a hefty section about that in the executive summary. Also in the plan, this is a slide that I added, but we did go through it in the plan. The main challenges for the department are keeping up with significant growth, continuing to move from an acquisition to a development or parks improvement phase, and then solidifying future funding for parks. The strategic goals, we have gone through those a couple of different times, so I'm just going to flip through those. The first one, as you know, talks about our programs and removing physical, financial, social, and cultural barriers and cultivating community needs in the spirit of Lacey. The second one has to do with leveraging funding and keeping our grant eligibility. And the third one is all about our trail system. The fourth dives into our, some of the areas the Historical Commission oversees. And then the fifth one, of course, applies more to sustainable systems and then the diversity, equity, and inclusion piece of making sure, and sustainability and making sure future generations are not compromised. We did go through the outreach. We had three significant outreach in the last two and a half years. We are super proud of, I think you guys are laughing about, Commissioner Goodwin. We've gone through three significant public outreach projects, and so this, I'm just so excited about this piece of it. The community input and involvement has been so robust this time around, and we just want to continue that. But as you know, we did Lacey Cares, we did Energize Lacey, and then with the Great Qyo Park Master Plan, that was just under a year and a half of interaction with the public for that project specifically, which is very significant. So the proposed updates for this plan versus the last one is those updated strategic goals that we went through. We updated the parks open space and facilities inventory. We updated the Lacey levels of service. We added recreation, museum, and cultural programs and did a more robust write-up about those levels of service and the needs there. We've included a map of non-city parks, green space, and habitat to show the full story of opportunities that people have in Lacey. And then we updated the implementation actions as a Parks Capital Improvement Program or PCIP in a new format, and these, we're going to be looking at specifically these two here tonight. Under the key goals and policies, we have continued to emphasize Lacey moving from an acquisition phase to development. We are continuing to establish a funding strategy. We have provided accurate travel sheds on the parks level of service map or that .5 mile service area. We have provided a map that indicates frequently traveled bus routes and proximity to parks and facilities as a starting point to increase access. And then we've identified that we need to conduct parks and facilities assessments moving forward to help us make a more of a recreational value assignment to our parks and facilities, which will help us guide future investments. We also have incorporated diversity, equity, and inclusion, or DEI, draft Strategic Plan components. And that's one of the things I'll be showing you here tonight is what the Commission on Equity has provided for updates. We know that moving forward, we need to determine what metrics we can gather to help with future decision-making. We have referenced and connected the city's pedestrian bicycle, pedestrian and bicycle plan to this, and so that'll come into play when we talk about the infrastructure around parks. That's kind of where that information is housed. And so the 2018 pedestrian bicycle plan wasn't around when we did the last update of this plan in 2017. So that's why it's a great opportunity for us to incorporate that. So I'm going to definitely show you that, a couple of pages on that pedestrian bicycle plan. And the neat thing is that any plans that are related, we can post those on our website next to the Discomprehensive Plan once it's updated, and so that everybody can like look in one place for the plans that are related. And then this one is something that we added in, and I'll get to that when we go through the body, but considering coordination with the land use element of the city's bigger comprehensive plan, of which the Parks Plan is a part of, to ensure parks and their associated master plans are compatible with adjacent zoning. I had already gone through these pages, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time. This is more the narrative around the spreadsheet that is now the Parks Capital Improvement Program. And so these are just highlighting some of the main themes that came up with the public input and also staff input. And so we'll get to that in the spreadsheet, but they're divided in here in different topics. This is something that I'm going to be going through with the Planning Commission and then the City Council as well, so that's why it's organized this way. Tonight, we want to give you a glimpse of the new format in each section as we go through. We need to update the park classifications. We need to review the updated maps. We need to review the future acquisitions section. It's right at the very end with our long-term implementation actions. I noticed a discrepancy between the beginning of the plan and the end of the plan as I was going through with the fine-toothed comb. And then that Parks Capital Improvement Program, I want to review the new format and make sure everybody understands that and see if there's anything missing from your standpoint. And this is all in addition to whatever, you know, updates that you might have. So with that, we're still on track with our timeline, and the intent is to get this in its new format into the Planning Commission packet this Thursday for their June 20th meeting. So with that, I will open the packet. Start going through. Oh, this is the link I want right here. We'll come back to this one. I think I already mentioned the table of contents would be updated. So the first item I was going to show is on page 21 for an update, but do any commissioners have anything prior to page 21?
If they see some between that, if they raise their hand.
Yes. Yeah.
I didn't know. You give recognition to Dave Weber. Should Ken Ballsley be recognized as well?
Yeah, so you know, that's a great question. So the reason we put a special thank you to Dave Weber is because he did start this Comprehensive Plan update with us. Ken Ballsley was off of the Parks Board before we started this update.
Okay.
And he was involved in the last plan update, so that's why I didn't put him on there.
I think you could add him.
I think you could add him.
You want to add him?
Thank you. Maybe just say, I don't know how you say it, but Dave Weber and Kim Ballsley deceased, I mean, in order years or, you know.
Just a recognition of service.
I worked at council, I know about Kim.
But just a recognition of service.
Thank you. Anything else before page 21? I'm going to do my best to not make you dizzy, so I will search by some keywords here. Oh, it's right there. Okay, so what I just wanted to point out here, this is the section about the, just kind of the route for approval that this is taking. This paragraph here is speaking as if it already happened. So this is going to be updated once the planning department sends it out to, it'll be very similar to this, but as you see here, it's speaking in the past tense, but it hasn't happened yet. So I just want to make sure you know that that will get updated.
What page you on?
21.
It's like a half page.
May I ask a question from, not from this, but what you were saying earlier, just kind of the zoning, the adjacent properties.
Yeah, so we're going to get to that in here.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure it stays in memory.
Yes, absolutely. That's something new that's been added, so I will cover that.
Thank you.
Yep. Did you have anything else prior to page 21, Commissioner? Okay, well, you stop me if you need to. I'm going to go to page 24. So here we are getting into the policies and objectives section. I know we've spent quite a bit of time on it, and so I just wanted to highlight some of the things that were different. On number eight, provide robust and community-driven parks, culture, and recreation resources where physical, financial, social, and cultural barriers to use are eliminated. This is one that the Commission on Equity, the last time I was there, had a suggestion for, and again, this says AA, we will fix that, ABC. They wanted to make sure that one of the things from the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Plan was mentioned in here, and that is provide services that are responsive, transparent, accountable, equitable, and welcoming with an emphasis on providing safe, trusted environment for underserved community members. So we integrated that wording. And then one of the things I wanted to point out on the the frequent public transit map that we've seen a couple of different times, we're going to put this one side by side with all of the parks facilities so that you can see the labels. I don't know if you recall, last time we talked about this, we didn't want to put too much labeling on all the maps, so we thought if there was an opportunity to do side by side, since the configuration is landscape now, we'll do that so that it's easy for people to find which park. And then under policy number 12, ensure a robust planning process is in place to reflect site suitability and development. So this is the one actually, Chair Goodwin, that I had mentioned earlier. Consider coordination with the land use element of the Comprehensive Plan to ensure parks and their associated master plans are compatible with adjacent zoning. So during a, last year, about a year ago, just over a year ago, there was a Meridian Market development in northeast Lacey. The, and it's close to Meridian Park, and it's a neighborhood commercial zoning. And so there was a market proposed to go in there, and it sparked a lot of conversation. And also in the parks, amongst the Parks Board members, there were a lot of questions about the role of the Parks Board when that happens. And so that is a, it's a process that is very strict and it's dictated. And so there, you know, although the Parks Board could provide comments, there wasn't really, you know, per, it's just the way it's set up. There wasn't a lot of communication about it. And so if we, if we do add this in here, this gives the potential to consider coordination with community and economic development. And I don't know if you remember, at the time, some of you weren't here yet, but we talked about if there's going to be something that's changed, it has to be changed at the policy level. It can't just be changed when there is a proposal that comes forward. And so by putting this wording in here, it gives the opportunity to talk about potential changes in the future. And from my understanding, there might need to be some changes to the city's Comprehensive Plan for that to happen, but at least since we're doing this plan update, we can change the wording to this and kind of open that door. The city is launching the overall Comprehensive Plan, of which this is a part of, very soon here, and it's going to be a very robust process, a long process. But some of the ideas are more collaborations amongst the boards so that you can see like the different perspectives.
Can I ask some?
I may not have all the answers about that, but I do know that this is something that could potentially be desired in the future.
So in this plan, this is saying we can consider coordinating with the land use Comprehensive Plan if we're making changes to a park or if they are making changes that will impact the parks.
They're making a change that would be adjacent to a park property or near to a park property.
Okay. And at what point does that happen? Is that quasi-judicial or after the permit goes through?
So that's what I don't know 100%. So what we did, for those of you that are new on the Parks Board, since this project came forth, there is a video that you can watch about the quasi-judicial process that the City Council goes through. And so I'd be happy to provide that information for you. Again, I don't want to get too much in the details of that, but I felt like this was a good consideration to have in the Parks Comprehensive Plan.
Yeah.
Just based on some of the conversation that came up during that process.
Was this part reviewed by Legal Council?
Say it again.
No, reviewed by City's Legal Council. Are we interfering?
No, so I did, nope, I checked, and I worked with Community and Economic Development to come up with this suggested wording for you all to consider. And so, yeah, we wouldn't be interfering.
I guess from my perspective, I would like it to be broader because right now I read it to say if we're going to acquire new property for parks, then we're going to look at the land use areas around it as opposed to, like Hillary said, if we've got an existing park and then somebody wants to change the zoning or the land use next to it, we want input. I think we want input on both sides. So existing parks and new parks, I don't know how that's going to work out. I don't know if it's part of, you know, a SEPA. I don't know if it's going to be part of whatever the future holds, but it's just.
Like the recent term, I guess, too, is another element. You could have this situation where the permitting authority could be Thurston County.
Mm-hmm. It could be on the edge.
And, you know, so who gets to overlap that, say, the mayor and the examiner at this county? And it goes that far, you know, it could be, but we've been through it already.
Well, that's why I think that quasi-judicial part of T4, because the permits were gone through. And then by the time public sees it, it's kind of. They don't really have a voice anymore. And that's, I think that's where everything kind of got caught up where people didn't understand. But, I mean, I guess where it's put into the process is what we have to look at for land use. I mean, is it before, after? It's been gone through the.
Well, and we, I mean, I'll be at the Planning Commission next. So, you know, if there's a, if you have a suggested word change or where it should go in the section, you know, and it might be something that they could help us finesse, but.
Maybe it's something too, like, we don't really have control over what the other departments do, right? But if the departments in the city cannot get on the same page to like agree to consult and work with each other, which it sounds like the city Comprehensive Plan is moving in that direction.
Yeah.
So maybe you can suggest they put something in like that, that language in there to ensure if there's rezoning around a park, the Parks Board is consulted before it's permitted. I don't know how those things work.
Well, yeah, so from what I understand is that, you know, if we put it in there as consider coordination, so to your point, Commissioner Fosbury of keeping it broad, like I said, that later, that opens the door if there's a change from the Comprehensive Plan side of it, to be able to make a policy change if that's warranted and once.
Will they, do they usually notify the parks if they're going to do something close to an existing park?
I guess you're looking through SEPA.
Okay.
You know, the, if you're, I want to open the fox out, that's the park. You know, there's like schools, you can't sell liquor within five hundred feet.
Yeah.
Boundary, unless it's already been established.
I'm just thinking about if they upzone something. So now it's apartments leaning on the edge of one of our wonderful open space parks. I don't care if it's good or bad, it's just be kind of nice to know, you know.
Upzoning mean building up?
Yeah, adding more density to an area.
Yeah.
Might restrict access. It might, it might be a great thing. Might put a shadow on a ballpark that you didn't want. I don't know.
Yeah, and I do think that this wording opens the door for those types of conversations.
Okay. Thank you for putting it in there.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. Yes, absolutely.
I was going to go to page 29 next. Does anybody have anything before that? Okay, so, oh, this is where, under Strategical Number Three, for the developing the trail systems, and so I did add in the following policies and objectives are derived in part from the city's pedestrian and bicycle plan. Please refer to the latest update for the most recent information and additional information regarding safety, connection, and building momentum in Lacey. And so the reason I used that wording specifically is.
Like a building momentum.
Well, that's wording from the, from the plan, and I'll show that to you. It's cool. Let's see, oh, I should have stayed shared there.
Considering we say, you mean rail, you mean railroad right-ofway, right? On the first part of that last one?
Um, the first part?
You said.
Use existing rail utility.
Although you say acquire, you know, railroad right-ofways. We're not in, we're not going to build next to a railroad. I mean, the main line between here and, I guess what your trail system, you want to take advantage of the potential to buy railroad right-ofway.
Yep. Yeah, and for example, there's a project that's mentioned in one of the planning areas as well, which is the Karen Fraser Woodland Trail Phase Three, which would go from Woodland Creek Park over to McAllister Park. And so the county has, Thurston County has expressed interest in acquiring that through grant funding and then donating it to the city to maintain as a part of the Phase Three of our current trail. So.
I love making a lot of community members. Yeah.
So the railway has to officially be abandoned before anything can happen. And so the last I heard, the county was working on that.
Abandoned.
So.
Take all the trains off and.
Yeah, so actually, from what I understand, the railway is not actually being used, but it has, there's, there's an official process that even if it's not currently being used.
Yeah, you go to the Surface Transportation Board, you put a request in. They can preserve it as rail line in the future, but in the meantime, we can use those trails.
Oh.
Yep, or they can completely abandon it and give it to us. But then if there's another railroad operator who steps up and says, I want to use that as a railroad, then you got to give it to them, but nobody's going to use that.
An old capoeira in my backyard.
Thanks for that information.
Want to put on a train. It's like, that's cool.
You know, they want their money and they give up their rights.
Yeah, so that would all, yeah, that would all have to be looked at, negotiated. So, but the city is definitely amenable to that if that's what happens. So, that's cool. Yeah. Yeah, so here's the ped and bicycle plan for the city of Lacey and Lacey UGA. And again, we'll be able to provide this link, you know, right next to our plan once it's finished. And what's great about this is, and I would encourage you to look through it, it just talks about, you know, that having good transportation corridors and trails and connections are important for the community. You know, the purpose is to present policies, programs, and infrastructure recommendations to improve connectivity, safety, and comfort in the city's walking and biking networks. So people can be safe and get exercise. And so it's really a great plan. Again, I would encourage you to read it. But what I really like, so here's the guiding principles, the safety, connection, and building momentum. And then when you get into existing pedestrian network, this is where you can really see where the sidewalks are in Lacey. It's kind of hard to see because there's so many of them. But there's some great maps in here to show, you know, how pedestrians can get around in Lacey. And then the other cool thing is, so here's the existing bicycle network, and it not only shows trails, but also like bike lanes.
Nice.
So where it's safe to ride a bicycle. And then the other thing is that when you get down to, so here's some pedestrian segment recommendations. And it's kind of cool, you can see, you know, for example, related to Great Qyo Park here, that there is a sidewalk connection recommended to go to Great Qyo Park. And so it would be great, eventually, from. To Great Qyo Park, and so it would be great eventually from that bus stop that's the closest, you know, to be able to get a sidewalk connection. And then there's bicycle segment recommendations, um spot improvement recommendations. Um we show the benefits of these connections and then they go through by those three um sort of themes, so making it safe. And it shows the action items and then who's responsible for it and who is supporting. So you can kinda see where the parks and recreation items overlap with, say, public works. And we talk a lot about, you know, providing infrastructure. So instead of going into detail about those things in. The parks comprehensive plan, we can just refer to this one. So that's.
Just turn it up, your structure. This comp plan goes to the plan, right? And the planning commission takes it to the city as adoption.
The planet, yeah, the planning commission would recommend it after the parks board recommends it to city council.
So this comp plan, and what I'm trying to get out of it is very helpful for future developments. If we have it in the comp plan for a bike lane on Pacific Avenue. You can help enforce that on their offsite improvements, like city water, sidewalks and all of that. So this is gonna be fairly. The map, that good or should be a little more greedy. See what I'm saying?
Um yes, you're you're suggesting more information in the comprehensive plan?
Well, I'm seeing, if I got a hundred acres and I'm gonna put a development in. And okay, and you're gonna go and start working with the city and your designers are gonna do it, you're gonna go to the city and say, what's my offsite? Street improvement. Well, we want four lanes, a highway, we want a left turn pocket here, we want that. On sidewalks, we want a light acrosswalk here, and then we want the bike lanes. So if we're not bulletproof of them, is that gonna give them a chance to weasel out of it? Say it wasn't on your comp plans, I don't have to.
Uh, no, no, because um because it would fall under the city's design standards and specifications. Through community and economic development.
So it's my understanding, so the comprehensive plan is a huge policy document.
Right.
That then goes to the planning commission, and the planning commission then puts their land use rules together. Get to the council that would have that specific information. We've looked in the comp plan, it says, we want to promote bicycle lanes and pedestrian sidewalks and things. And then the council then will change the land use rules based on what the comp.
Support that.
To support that. So I think by putting the bike plan in, either both our parks board stuff. Or just by itself should give enough authority, I think. Yeah.
Cause this will go to, with the plan, is public, we saw the Thurston County Public Works, so like the Martin Way corridor that's getting put in.
What is that?
Well, the Martin Way, um it depends, there's also county projects that are on Martin Way, so it depends on where.
So are there gonna be, there's gonna be negotiations, because you've got Thurston County Public Works, that part of up above on the last one that you were at.
Yeah, so for example, um.
On the map that you had up above there, yeah, I'm sorry. So if we go where Martin Way corridor, it's gonna be put in there.
Oh, I don't know, maybe I'm just wiggly, maybe it's. I think it's. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Martin Way, I don't see any, I see. Sidewalk.
Just need some music.
I mean, these are, um so this, so this plan has recommendations and who would be responsible to take these different actions. The, and this was generated by the Community and Economic Development Department, this plan, and so. They are, you know, as as the city develops, they're going to take these actions into consideration. So it would just be duplicate for us to put it into the parks comprehensive plan. And so that's why we can refer to it.
Yeah.
Question.
Yeah.
I got a lot of card in the mail from DOT about this.
Oh, yeah.
Projections for the new I five.
Nisqually expansion or whatever.
Here we got that, we're working on one down Martin Way. I mean, I don't, you know.
Are they all talking to each other?
Hope they're talking. Cause that's our UGA, is that part of our urban growth boundary down on that corner?
Um, why don't we look, remind me when we get to the maps?
Yeah.
We can look at the boundary. Um, okay, let's see. Um so my next change was on page thirty two. And then I think that's where we're gonna actually pause. And have Sarah show us the design. So let me.
Okay.
Is that correct, Sarah?
Yep, I can do that. Let me get this.
Uh let me do, let me do one more.
Sure.
And then I think, I guess you just let us know once we're to the point where. I just can't remember if the local parks history is in this section or the next one. Okay, so strategical number five. I wanted to point out, um so I know we went through all the history stuff and historical commission recommendations. Um goal five, the commission on equity had some pretty significant updates for this. So we did reference, just like you saw up above with the pedestrian bicycle plan, it says the um. The following policies and objectives are derived in part from the city's diversity, equity and inclusion draft plan. They don't have it completely done yet, but once they do, we can post that. Yep, which will be completed after the adoption of this plan, please refer to the latest update for the most recent information. And so what they did um is. Under increased community access and engagement, they added implement the communications plan. Including developing a language access plan to improve communication accessibility. And continue to enhance the cultural relevancy of city materials. And then. Uh this one B, continue to develop and implement engagement strategies that build community trust and increase. Participation of Black Indigenous and people of color or BIPOC and other underrepresented voices in local decision making, including on advisory bodies. Tasks, forces and planning efforts. Enhance relationships and opportunities in the community for continued dialogue and knowledge sharing among city partner entities and community members through events, programs. Forums, art, et cetera. Um be intentional and create meaningful tools and metrics that contribute to equitable outcomes. And then recognize and support diversity and inclusiveness through acknowledgement statements, public art, events, programs and use of city platforms to amplify community voices. So this one D, the be intentional and create meaningful tools and metrics. That is one that I mentioned in the slides earlier of, you know, determining those tools moving forward that we can use. We may not know all the metrics that we're gonna use moving forward at this particular moment, but we're gonna continue working on those and make sure we're getting. You know, getting information out to people and make sure that we're meeting them where they are. One of the things that came up the last commission equity meeting was, you know, not everybody. Checks social media or um can get a digital newsletter or maybe even has access to a computer. So, you know, we just talked about really working through this and um I think we talked a little bit at one of our last parks board meetings about this.
Yeah, communications in regards to.
Uh the financial assistance policy.
Yeah, financials.
Yes, thank you. I've been to so many commission meetings, I forget which one I was at. Um, okay, so uh anything else on policies and objectives? Okay, Sarah, is this where the break is or do I continue with local area history?
Um, that's, um so our strategic goals and then we've got our third section has all the public involvement stuff. And then, sorry, I'm musing out loud. I think that's right about where the break is.
Okay, so wanna, I'm gonna stop share if you wanna show us the first segment. And again, we're still working on typos and numbering and. Even photos a little bit still.
Yes, so it's a nice way of saying ignore all the little highlighted pieces. All right, can everybody see this? Right, I'll make it a little bit bigger. Okay, so this is just the cover. Um I think we've seen some of this before, so ignore the little yellow boxes, they're just comments for editing. So we've got this, and then we've got our, oh, another little zoom bar, get out of here, okay. Dreaded zoom bar, okay, here we go. Um so we've got our executive summary is gonna look like this. Not to make anyone very dizzy, just trying to breeze through it so you can get an idea of what it'll look like. Some of these lines will be adjusted, we just have some areas of text we gotta edit.
So I personally love the landscape because of the photos, the full page photos that are entered.
It looks really great with the photos. And then, yeah, we've got some like tiny adjustments, but this is our strategic goal section. Which is kind of brief, but that's okay, that's what we wanted, a lot of dividing it up so it's easy for people to read. And then we've got our public involvement. And again, I'm just breezing through to make it easy for people to just see the examples, so we can keep talking about the content, but.
Well, the benchmarks, I don't think we've shown on the benchmarks. Do you wanna zoom in on that one just a little bit?
Oh, yeah. Um my goal is to maybe make this a little bit larger, actually, I'm gonna.
Yeah, I think so.
More, more legible would be nice, okay. Yep, so we've got this, and then this one has to be updated with the most recent, Jamie had a correction for something that he found. So I updated some of these figures, but this is roughly correct.
Yes, we'll be able to see some of the um amenities we have as compared with the national average.
Oh, I see.
Yes, so that'll be really cool. All right, let me get our top conclusion summarized, which I wanna make that. An actual title, so I'm just gonna highlight real quick. Okay. And then these are like some photos we're gonna be editing and adding. And then we're making some changes with some of our photos and some of our spacing, but you can kind of get the idea of what it looks like from here. And why we went with the landscape mode. And then we've got our strategic goals, policy areas.
That we just went through, policies.
Yeah. And then we're gonna have a more updated public transit map. And then we get into our, more of the details around our strategic goals. Oh boy, hang on, I apologize, I think it might have frozen.
So, Sarah.
Yes.
Question. So you're putting this together as if it's gonna be a printed document, but it's actually an electronic one, it's gonna live on the webpage.
Yes, so we wanted to.
You think in the next six years, we're gonna get away from the printed copy? Live in the now and.
I think that's always.
You're going through all this effort to make it such a. Piece of paper that most people are just gonna look up online.
Well, I do think it's beautiful though with the landscape just on the screen too.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think, I think we are getting more away from paper copies, but also just back to the access piece. I think there's always gonna have to be, at least for the foreseeable future, there's gonna have to be some printed copies. Yeah, cause I mean, we've gone, you have our brochure there.
I had to get them because there was people that were asking me for the playbooks, because they don't have access.
Yeah, so there's a great example, this is our, you know, our brochure of activities and rental and, you know, there are still, there are still people. But yeah, we used to.
Doing hundreds of hours, did this thing look, looks great.
You're kind of designing for both the web and for.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly. And something Jen and I have talked about a little bit is like, this is also great bones for the next version. Cause it's never been this fleshed out and this fully put into like a graphic design, like professional looking document. So this is kind of building the bones for the next one too, so we can refine it a little bit more. So this is um both making it look really great online, very accessible for print, and then for the future, it's giving us something to work with and. Um jump off of in later years to hopefully make this process faster.
Awesome. Yeah, we did, it is, has been a heavy lift to get it into a new format. It's been in a Word document, like to this point, so. Yeah, it has taken a little longer, um but it's uh. Uh you know, it's something that like Sarah said, we're gonna be able to use the format moving forward and it's in in design now, so.
Yeah.
I think it's a good.
Yes, so it it was a lot of backend change too, not just like to content and things like that, there were just other little. Creature comfort features that we chose to work with now rather than to front load it onto the beginning of seven years earlier, so in the next seven years, it won't take this long.
Well, it's almost like a need, it's like a breakout where you're looking for specific things, you're not gonna read the whole thing cover to cover.
Yeah.
Specific things that they're going to be looking at, so I think the opportunity to break them out, if I'm looking for. Transit, this is where I go. If I'm looking for bike trails, this is where I go. So I think at the, as it. Evolves, it probably will get more concise for what you specifically, specifically you're looking for, hoping. Yeah, it's huge, it's a monster.
Yeah, hopefully.
It's impressive work though, I mean, that's, that's a very um attention to detail.
Thank you. Yes, it's been some uh excellent local folks working on it, and then we brought it in-house and Chris Janka has been. Really awesome about helping us make some corrections to this. There was a whole section that needed to be redone and she did it in a day, so it's been a lot of. It's very much the whole department coming together, making it happen.
Came off the ground, I mean, from even us starting the comprehensive plan, things that were not even built, I mean, since I started. I mean, everything you've had to develop and put into, it's amazing, because we didn't have DEI. The survey information, we didn't have any transit information, so.
Hmm, you're right, I mean, it it is really cool, the direction we're going, it is a lot of work. Um this is the busiest, you know, in the six and a half years that I've been here, this is the busiest, like the parks board packets have been and the projects have been. So even before COVID times, this is busier than before COVID.
The next one, you gotta do it easy.
Well, that's worth, yeah, that's the hope, we're trying to tee it up here, yeah. For an updated format.
Yeah, and we've got some, so we've got some stuff in here like these, um of course, now it needs updating. So these maps are actually gonna be, the, these pages are flagged to be removed, um just because we're expressing the data differently. So we're still gonna have some demographic information per feedback from the commission on equity. Um but it's gonna look different than it does right now and.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out, Sarah. Basically, um it's just gonna show what the demographics are in Lacey. We're not doing the indexing, I, we pulled this out of a prior copy, but somehow it snuck its way back into this draft.
Yeah, it happens.
Do that change, but.
But it's an easy delete, so it'll be pretty quick. Um and then I don't know why it's decided to try and keep loading for some reason, there we go, okay. Yep, so we've got, ah, sorry, to make everyone dizzy. Yes, so that's the end of that section, that section three, which is the public involvement section. And then we've got, oh, I thought I had this scroll back up. Section four is our local area history, and I think that's where we wanted to pause, right, Jen?
Yeah, and actually, um well, you can stay there for a moment, so the local area history. Uh there were some updates from the last copy that you saw, uh that the museum curator was able to add in there. And it's just, um she, what's really cool is she was able to add in some of the information about the indigenous. You know, the Coast Salish people that were here originally, and so she went back a little bit more in time, um now known as the Nisqually and Squawson Island tribes. And then she was able to insert um some more information about. Uh black people in Lacey, uh many black people arriving in Thurston County faced housing challenges. Due to discrimination and redlining and ended up living in Lacey, which was without racially restricted covenants. Um and so uh that was some of the feedback that the commission on equity had also provided. And what's great is our museum curator had done a, um she updated the proclamation for Lacey History Month, which comes every May. And so we were able to kind of use some of that wording to update. Yeah. Yeah, so, so go ahead a couple pages, Sarah, and then I might need to flip back.
Okay, so then we're in our local parks history, which we've been over a bunch of times, and then we've got. Our list of park facilities with our year acreage, funding source and parks planning area it's located in.
Oh, if you go up, I noticed a vacant spot. Go up to the next one.
Ah, right there.
Oh, so we'll need to fill that one in.
Okay.
Again, we'll go, we'll be going back through it.
Okay. Okay. Alright, and then we're in our parks overview, parks and facilities overview.
Yeah, thank you, so, um, yeah, this one was in your packet too, and so this one just looks a little too, well, we'll, we'll fix this. Um, it's a little bit too long, but this is overview of Parks Cultural Recreation and North Thurston Public Schools facilities. We had a request early on to have the school sites added in there, and then I think you all helped us differentiate with the colors and the lettering.
Alright, and then that would take us into section five, which is definitions, and Christie finished this and crushed it, and it looks beautiful.
So, yeah, so this was definitely added, um, we had facility definitions, but we didn't have general definitions. And so we had a few questions as people were reading through, like, what does this mean, and what does this mean? So, um, so Sarah actually went through kind of with a fine tooth comb and, and tried to find things that a layperson wouldn't know what they meant, and I actually didn't, I wouldn't consider myself a layperson when it comes to activities and recreation. I didn't know Gaelic rugby, so it's mentioned in our plans, so.
Yep, I tried to go through it from the perspective of someone that's never done this kind of work before or seen anything like this before. So we got some pretty, they seem basic to us cuz we're in, we have the language, and we know the language, it's all in our lexicon, but um, I was trying to think of like what folks might need who don't have that, who don't have access to that. So we went through and got as many of these defined as we could, so people could better understand it, and we kept the facility definitions, um, separated out just cuz they're very specific to the facilities, but we did keep them separated out, um, and give them their own separate titles, so they're still in there the way that they were, we just made it a little bit more clear what basic terms mean.
And we're gonna come back to these facility definitions because we need to update that section once we get there, so. We will do that.
And that's our definitions, and that would bring us to our next one, which is the levels of service standards. And then, did you want me to take pause here, Jen?
Um. Let's see, um, actually, go ahead, cuz I don't have, I don't have anything that's gonna be different than what you're showing, so just know that the text you're looking at up here is the same as what's in your packet.
Yes, pretty much all of the text should be about the same.
Instead of going through both ways, we'll just look at it in the pretty format, for this anyway.
Yeah.
Don't think we've had any changes since the packet's gone out.
Right.
Yes, and then I just highlighted some sections that we wanna get some, um, graphic design stuff fixed.
But do the commissioners have any changes for levels of service? So it should be the, um, the park, or the facility definitions, I think is coming up here.
Uh, facility definitions, we kept on the definitions page.
Oh, um, sorry, there's a grid.
Oh.
It shows what the classifications are. So you could probably make a, oh, yep, this is the one I'm looking for, okay, we got some homework here.
Okay, awesome.
Um, so, oops, I'm going to suggest some changes as we go through, um, these park classifications, so, um, so Arbor's Park is, is a neighborhood park, and this is one that actually was not in the comprehensive plan before. Um, Arbor's Park is owned by the city of Lacey, but there is a maintenance lease, it's a twenty-five year lease with the Ar- Arbor's Park, or it's also known as the Meadowdale Homeowners Association. Um, so it's an anomaly, we, we have a lease to operate some state properties like Wash Dot, but we don't have it the other way, typically the HOA parks are run by the HOA, and city parks are run by the city. This is an anomaly, like I said, um, they, and they're tasked with keeping it up to date with, um, the standards that the city would have for a park, and so what's happening is that lease is gonna expire in, uh, twenty, twenty-five, so in about a year, or two years, basically, it's July twenty-twenty-five. Um, but we're taking a deep dive in there because some of the, uh, some of the items in the park are not, haven't actually been ma- maintained. Uh, but we did wanna add it, even though it's not operated by us right now, it's still a park property, so.
Is that the one by the Shalil's question trail, um, between college and Reagan's?
Nope, um, it's, so once we get to the map section, remind me to show you where that is. Uh, but it is a small park and it's got a play toy, uh, playground, and so it, and no restroom, so it's basically a neighborhood park.
It's actually been deeded to the city.
It's actually, the city has owned it.
Okay.
City is the owner, is the property owner, but we have a ma- they have a maintenance agreement. Yeah, it's one of those things from long, long ago that we found recently.
Don't worry, we'll get sued if somebody hurts themselves.
So they do have insurance, and they do name the addition, uh, city as additionally insured, um, we, but currently, actually, I, I was gonna put it on a future agenda, but we do have the playground closed down right now, we are working with the HOA, we all have the same interest, and that is that nobody gets hurt, so, yeah. So I can give you an update about that later, but, um, Avonlea, so i- if it's not, if I think that there's a different classification, I'm gonna bring it up, otherwise, I'll just go through, um. So Brooks Park is undeveloped, so it should actually be considered open space, so, so Sarah, I'll make, oh yeah, are you just gonna make them on there?
Yeah, I've just been making them using the Adobe comments.
Why is Civic Plaza open space?
Right, so that's another, yeah, thank you, it should be a plaza. Yeah, so we, yeah, this is one that like, I noticed there were a bunch of things that needed to be changed, this is why we do this. So if we look at our definitions, um, and, and I don't know why that was, so that it should be a plaza. Cuz if you look at, it says plazas and public spaces are small specialized facilities, including tot lots, downtown parks, and seating areas along trails or sidewalks. Typically used for nearby residents or special user groups such as downtown employees and shoppers, so. Yeah, plaza, um, so great KU Park, so it's interesting that it's in here, I, you know, we, I think last time we put it in as a future, well, it could be now, um, neighborhood, community, and regional. They're not, it's not quite at that status yet because it's not being used, so it should probably state what it is currently. Um, which, right now, it's open space.
Yes.
It's almost, I mean, we're really, we're really close.
A field and a forest and a, lots of brambles.
Yep, so once, once we do have Phase One A, it could probably be considered a neighborhood, probably even community because of the size of it. Um, but we're just not quite there yet.
So Pleasant, whatever the one is that we went to.
Pleasant Glade.
Is, is that actually open now? I mean, you could actually park.
Pleasant Glade, um, Pleasant.
You can walk into it.
Yeah, Pleasant Glade Park is open to the public, it's the only piece that is officially open to the public at this point, um, but it's a walk tour bike tour. So, early on, when I started, we, here, we looked into doing a lot, a parking lot there, and it got a little complicated pretty quick, um, and expensive, and so there is like kind of a gravel area, but it's not, it would have to be developed, um, for parking.
And you can't park on the side of the street.
And you shouldn't park on the side of the street, yeah. So there were problems, there were problems with that when it first opened, from what I understand, I wasn't here at the time, but yeah, it was, it was a big deal, um.
So what are you gonna call it then? Neighborhood?
Well, yeah, so let's.
Community or?
Um. So Pleasant Glade, so yeah, so let's. Yeah, it should be, it should be neighborhood.
So what's green though? Can we go in alphabetical order?
Yeah, well, I was starting at the top, yes.
Let's jump around.
Well, I mean, whatever you guys wanna do.
Just cuz I don't wanna miss one, and then it's messed up.
Yeah, so the Green Belt is a piece of property that was purchased, um, just to preserve the property around Willa Creek, so it's just, uh, and I can show it to you on the map, but it's definitely open space.
Is that what it's called, is Green Belt?
We refer to it as Green Belt, um, it's not really a park.
It's not like.
It's a park property, but it's not.
Which isn't maintained.
So, so on the map that you have, it has the numbers on it, and I, maybe you can put the numbers on this one too.
Oh, yeah.
One through thirty-two.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah.
I know, cuz that's what I'm used to, cuz the Arbor's Park, I, is not on that.
We had it, we did add it.
It's online now.
Yeah, but the one that was printed, that I just got, it only has one through thirty-two.
It's not on that.
Oh, it's not in your packet, okay.
But it's on.
I apologize, it is, yes, we, I know we did it, I just, yeah. Um, okay, did you make that note, Sarah, of the numbering?
No, I missed it, I apologize.
Oh, that's okay, so what would be great is if we could number these the same as they are on the parks map.
Okay, can do.
So, yeah.
So I'd like another column for the number, or just put the number next to the, I'm sure you'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Just formatting. Sorry.
Just another hour.
That is something as simple as that can be.
Okay, um. Alright, so again, if there's no, okay, so Hunter Maria, this is interesting. Huntermore Park.
I wouldn't say it's a neighborhood park.
I think it's a plaza.
I would say it was.
You know, I think the reason we did neighborhood last time, uh, well, I'll tell you, it's because there are, there are climbing rocks. Um, and then I think community came in because there's so many community events there. And it kinda, even though it's tiny, it operates as a community park, like it draws.
Plaza slash community.
Um, yeah, it could be, it could either be plaza or plaza slash community.
I think it's plaza slash community, there's so many events there, plus it's more, it's in the state, the things, I, it's not neighborhood though, cuz it's not attached to. Are you doing magic?
Sarah's not gonna see what you're pointing to on the screen.
For Huntermore, right?
Uh, yeah, so it should be plaza slash community.
Plaza slash community.
Yep, if you type them in, then I don't need to write them down, so.
Yep, that's the hope.
Yeah, okay, I five Park and Trail.
Oh, the, like, the park and ride? On Martin?
No, so I five Park and Trail is one that is owned by DOT, but the city has had a long-term lease to operate that trail. And we can look at the map again, um, to show you, but, so this is interesting, it should be a trail. So I'm not sure that trail was used at all the last time around, again, this is why we're updating.
So is it like Slater County, is that that little trail that goes?
Yeah, it goes under the tunnel, um, but there is an open space just to the east of that, um, towards City Hall from the tunnel here.
At right now.
Um, there, yeah, we've had some issues with homeless.
What's on the, what does it say for, um, the Civic Plaza, what has that been titled as?
Plaza.
Plaza.
Yeah, so with that, it's trail slash plaza, something's attached to it, or?
This one has, uh, if you haven't been over there, there's actually a nice green space area.
Space slash plaza, right, I mean, cuz you are attached to.
I think it should be a trail.
Trail only?
And I think it should be a trail, open space slash trail, I think, that's my opinion. And yeah, we'll, cuz we'll be going through all sections, we'll show you when we get there. Here in Fraser, Willa Trail should be a trail, thank you very much. Uh. I think this one is correct, um, I think this one is correct, that one's correct, just stop me if you disagree. Long Lake Natural Area, um, you can take community off of there, that's should be just open space, yeah. I think Long Lake works as a neighborhood and a community park, personally.
Hmm.
Um, McAllister Grove should be, since it's undeveloped, it actually should be open space, I think.
We're not there yet.
Um, Meridian Campus North, open space. Again, I think last time some of these got put in as what they're gonna be in the future, but it should be, it should be real time, that's why.
Okay, it looks like that's.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, I think that one is correct. Habitat, Ramon Road Habitat Reserve is definitely conservancy.
Wait, aren't the Meridian ones not developed yet?
So one of them is, Meridian Neighborhood Park is by Salish Middle School.
Okay.
Yeah, that's one of our really busy parks. This one is a five acre piece that is undeveloped.
Should that be open space?
Uh, yes, that's what we were.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
No, that's okay. Um, Palm Creek Headwaters is just open space, again, it's poised for future, but.
We're building community.
Um, Pleasant Glade should just be neighborhood. Cuz it doesn't have all amenities done yet. Yep, um, Rayner Vista, I think is correct.
Yeah.
Gosh, this one, we could almost add regional with the amount of like pickleball tournaments that we've had there.
And you have the.
And soccer probably too.
Those fireworks spectaculars, and then we have all those events going on in there, I think we're almost rack regional for that.
Yep, let's have regional.
That one, yeah. And soccer tournaments and baseball tournaments.
Yep, and we do overflow for rec tournaments there as well, so it's, yeah, it's been attractive.
And if you get the cricket.
Um, I think this one is correct.
Yeah.
South Lake Trail should be a trail. South Lake Lake.
I was shocked when I saw that on the map.
Yeah.
We, we own two swamps, basically right next to the lake.
Yeah.
Can't even access.
I know, but it's good for the environment, it makes a healthy community though, it's really, really good.
Can you get to it from the backside, from Aspire, the middle school?
No, I don't think so.
There is a, is that, oh, that's more. Is South Lake, where is South?
Oh.
So we'll, we gotta get to the map, yeah, it's down.
Bracy Elementary and Timbaland High School.
Oh.
Sites of swamp.
Thinking of another, oh, land preservation.
No, it's fine.
I need my birds and my butterflies and rapids, dude.
Well, when you walk on road, you can see it.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So Watchers is interesting, partially developed. There is a lot of open space.
Um, there's not a lot of signage there, I mean, it's almost.
So neighborhood parks
Thirty-four.
Are five to twenty acres, so I'm trying to remember how, it's fourteen.
Oh, there it is.
Oh, by Hicks Lake.
Yeah. Oh, I've been there once. It's kinda run down.
Uh, by the side of it, yeah. Yep.
Aren't they developing, putting the huge apartment buildings or something next to it?
Mm-hmm. I think.
Does that really get used?
I think it's a neighborhood because there's.
Yeah, I would say neighborhood, yep, I think that that's right, um, but the question is, do we want open space on there? Yeah, I don't know why it says community, I think because during the summer, people go swim there, even though there's not a a designated swim area.
Launch their kayaks.
There's a lot of use during the summer, I think that's why it probably got put as a community.
Well, like, I think of open space, I mean, it's a pretty enclosed area, I mean, there's only a couple little places to go, I don't really think of it as like an open like an open space, I mean, there's a parking lot, there's, there's, there's no bathrooms there right now, are there?
No.
No.
I think you should just say neighborhood, do you?
That on fire, yeah, I, I kinda see it as a neighborhood park.
I agree, cuz.
Yeah, there was a porta potty.
Yeah, there's no real bathroom, I say neighborhood.
Yeah, I think it's.
You gotta go to your own house, you know, I mean, yeah. I agree with.
Yeah, and then West and South, those should be plaza, both, again, I.
How long ago did this get done?
Uh, seven years ago.
Well, cuz the plazas should be, that one should be called a plaza.
What's that?
I'm talking.
Yeah, I mean, it's possible, we, you know, we just didn't see some of them.
Well, now that we have.
Possible, this is why we go through it.
Now that we have definitions, that's easier.
That's right. Okay, neighborhood, yes, that's correct, William Ives should be a trail. Wonder what I think is correct and Woodland Creek, I think is correct. Job, that was one of our homework items. For your help with that.
We need gold stars.
Gold star.
Thank you, Sarah, for taking notes.
Well, now, we can talk about our updated level of service maps.
So again, the structure is gonna change, so this ba- we'll move these up, so this big gap's not here, just everyone has.
Okay, so. This, so what I want to look at here, another one of our homework items is. We need to update, like, in the future, if there was potential acquisition, you know, there was an opportunity that came up. You know, where would it be, uh, wise to, to get property? So if you look at our service level, so as a reminder, these. Gray, um, shapes are the travel sheds. And so you, it's really abundantly clear where gaps are, right, of the point five mile service areas. And so let's start up here. I mean, granted, this one. As we get more access to this, um, that's gonna be updated, right? This is great video. Yeah, so you'll have more access in and around here. And so, you know, that will get updated. Uh, oh, this doesn't show the top. Of the city limit. Okay, we'll need to, uh, do you wanna put a little note in there? We need the. See how this one goes all the way up to the water?
Okay.
What is that kind of reddish lacy urban growth area, I see? Okay, so let's look at the point five mile service area, and then I'll get back to your questions about where some of those parks were. So it's really clear to see that, you know, as far as city parks. Our facilities go, there's a park desert right there.
Yeah.
Right? And so, um, so in the different planning areas, and then at the very end, it talks about like. Um, property, areas that property could be, could be picked up potentially in the future. But one of the things I want to show you is how some of the other facilities come into play. So we'll look at that next, so that you can see. You know, other parks and other facilities and private.
Like schools.
And schools kind of fill in those gaps. So that's why I wanted to do that as a part of this plan update. Um, because, you know, the city can't always do it all and, and we do partner with other, you know, other providers in the area, so that'll be good to look at. Um, but for this one, you can see Patterson, that's Patterson Planning Area down there. There's no city facilities. Um, our planning department tells us, it, this is the potential of, of maybe dropping out of the city's urban growth area. Um, just because it's hard to provide, uh. Uh, utilities out there. Uh, it is for now still in the city, but that would have to be carefully considered, um, if the city would purchase property out there. Uh, but you can see that there's some gaps here, and we'll look at the planning areas map, uh, and compare it to this, but you can, you can see where the gaps are.
And then the side of Mullen there. Is the school district by a forty in there from James? You know, Marvin hits Mullen there.
Marvin, this is Marvin? This is Marvin. Is this Mullen?
Go south, go south. Keep going, take off.
Keep going, keep going. You're gonna hit the T.
That's Mar- Mullen, right?
And then you take a right a little bit by the old fire station, substation. There's a Bob James Ranch there. It was forty acre. I think the school district tied that up.
Oh, the school district?
High school.
Oh, really?
Oh. There's some public schools?
Pardon?
North Thurston Public Schools?
Yeah.
Oh, interesting.
I, it's, I have not talked to Dean or anybody.
Okay.
But, um, I think that was tied up by the school district. I don't know.
Okay, they do have some properties for future expansion. Um, we don't have those mapped out on ours. We only have what they currently. Have school, schools on.
I mean, as far as our plan goes. Knowing what those are, future acquisitions for schools, that would help me. You know, an elementary school has playfield, you know?
Yeah.
Everything is part of that community, huh? You know, with the schools, like we have.
Yeah, that's interesting. We didn't put the, the school district. Properties that they own that are non, that are current non-school properties. But there is wording somewhere in the plan that says we'll work with the school district on future.
Yeah.
You know, projects, so that's.
But this is all zoned out as well, right? I mean, everything has been zoned.
What do you mean?
Like with the zoning and all of, all of this land has.
Well, it's county right now, though, so.
So they're gonna have to work with county to make the zone, what it can be, whether it be park or.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, all properties have a, a particular zoning. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, I mean, and so if you said that that's a park desert that's right there in the center. Is that where you all are gonna have to work with as far as zoning it out, saying this is gonna be commercial, this is going to be parks? I mean, how does that, I don't know how that works when you're building.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Put a business here, do I put a park here? If I put, I mean, how many acres does each residential goes here?
Yeah, I, I think what you're saying is there may not be like the open park institutional zoning. Uh, spaces available to purchase.
Yeah.
So I think that's a really good point. And let's, let's look at the, next we'll look at the overall, the wild, um, park and pool in there. As well.
Back to my little thing there, as you hit there, then if you go over to KG, you come down and go to fifty eight. Where Walt Cox had all that property, those houses, that's preliminary plat- uh, approved and sold, three chamber on the wall there.
Okay.
So I don't know what's going in there, so sewer and water is.
And that's down here?
Well, they, they, yeah, it'll have to be. You can't put, um, I don't know how many, he went from KG to Meridian.
Putting houses? Putting houses in there or?
Yeah, he bought all that from, I don't know, the whole store, but. I know I've involved a little bit, I know Steve Chamberlain for years too, but, um. I heard that the whole preliminary plat. Got approved and he, what he does is he kind of does it, runs it with it and gets it. Then he sells the preliminary plat to developers.
Oh.
So there is sewer available. Uh, right there on Mullen, all the way up, uh. That can go down, Ma- Marvin, I've got sewer stubbed on, uh, by the main river line on Marvin Road down Cairo there by the main track. So it, it's coming now. So don't give it away.
So potentially, yeah, so, um. Well, it, and it does state in the comprehensive plan that that is an area that could be looked at for potential park property in the future.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
So I think that we.
That would help though, if the high school was built there, and actually that's our next fourth high school.
Sure.
Well, that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay, and so if you want to move down, Sarah, okay, so here's our. So now we have the non-city, um, parks and facilities, and so there's some labels over here. These are. Uh, the non-lacy parks and facilities, so they're listed out here. I don't think that one was updated. No, the ones that you have in your packet have been replaced with these ones, so you don't have the most current, which is why we wanted to show it to you up here. Um, do you want to, uh, Sarah, can you zoom in on the keys real quick? Just the top portion? If you guys can see it. So you'll see Chambers Lake, open space, Thurston County Fairgrounds, Shaheilis Western Trail North. We did a north and a south segment of the Shaheilis Western. Um, there's the county off-leash dog park. Um. Closed Loop Park and Demonstration Garden, uh, Fort Eaton Monument, uh, Shaheilis Western South, Woodland Creek Wetlands. Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife Boat Launch on Patterson Lake, on Hicks Lake, um, on Chambers Lake. Homestead Park, and then we have the Billy Frank Jr. Disvolving National Wildlife. So that's what these brown ones are. And then in green, you see that institutional open space zoning. So these are just, um. These are green spaces, and so we didn't do, uh, we didn't do travel sheds around them, cause a lot of them are just natural areas. But it just shows you what is in, in Lacey. Okay, and then Sarah, if you wanna look, uh, show us the one on the right side a little bit more. This here. Um, so the pink, so it's added here. These are private parks, and so you have some of the HOA parks. And what I noticed earlier is that there's still some up here that need to be added, so we can go ahead and access.
And are private parks like? The public's unwelcome or?
Well, those would be like HOA, um, so. Um, they are designed, be- because the HOAs operate them, and they operate them, they're supposed to be for the people that live there. I'm not gonna say that someone hasn't gone to one of those parks, but, um, it's, yeah, I mean, the intent is that they're. For the residents, yeah. Um, and then if you wanna scroll down just a little bit, Sarah? Can see the bottom. Oh, and the blue is the school district facilities. And. And then.
It's funny, I have to remind myself, it's a half mile radius around whatever this little park is.
That's right.
Cause I'm like, I don't, I don't remember one being that big over my Long Lake Park.
Yeah, it's the travel, so what we're doing, yes, what we're doing is we're mapping out the travel shed, and what's really interesting, so this is one that we need to insert. So Sarah, if you wanna stop share and share the combined, so this is what I really want to show is, you know, what the city access, city parks are, city access. Non-city parks, non-city or access, um, zones, travel sheds, and then we put it all together. It's very colorful, but, um, thank you, Sarah. What is really cool is that.
Sorry, it is being very weird. Give me one second.
Great.
Okay, there we go.
There we go. Yeah, so all parks, open spaces and facilities in Lacey. And again, I think there's a few missing from up here, so we will fill those in. Um, but you know, it's just mostly for information purposes, this one, just to show that really. Where those, you know, where that big park desert was, there are facilities for the public in those. In those areas.
A bunch of warehouses.
It's hard to work around those. But true. It still is pretty good.
Pretty good.
And then you can see, yeah, I mean, where there were some gaps in our map, you can see it's kind of filled in, um. Still down in, uh, I mean, this is a little bit better down here. Right? The non-city, um, facilities. But look at, look at the southwest. It's pretty great coverage, if you think about it. Um, so these, these ones here, so these are the parks. And then the ones with the kind of the checkered background, that's that open, uh, open.
Institutional.
Can you scroll up?
Open space.
The zoning, yeah, open space zoning, uh, institutional open space zoning. So. I could probably get a better description of what that is and put it at the base of the map, so that people know.
Does it basically mean you can't build there?
Talking about that forty that I'm talking about, because I think on the curb, I'm already in the school district, there are another ten acres in there. Cause they're green on your map.
Oh.
Verdi?
Yeah, down there where I was.
Oh, where you were. Can you scroll down, Sarah? Um, okay, so.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. Are you saying there should be more of this? This one?
Yep.
That's the one you were talking about?
Yeah, both of those.
So those are institutions.
It's a big square, I can see it, Google Maps. That's for the lions, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It looks like it, yep.
I'm less recycling center, oh.
That was the old fire station.
Yeah, they're asking. They were asking for volunteers.
And then Sarah, can you go? Can you go back to the other set of maps that you had up? And then scroll up one page. I just wanted to make sure you knew where those parks were that we were talking about.
Oh, thanks.
Look, one more page. Okay, if you wanna zoom in on the, the left there. Thank you so much, Sarah. Yeah, um, okay, so we're looking for Arbor's Park, to point it out on the map. Number one.
I see it, is it there? The little one right there? Is that?
It says dogs allowed.
Our friend are rude and.
Oh, where do you see that?
Yeah, you just type it into Google Maps. Dogs allowed.
That's important.
As long as they're on a leash.
People do not follow that very well.
Yeah, so does that help where that one is?
Yes, thanks.
And then, um, I think the I five park control was.
Oh, you know, I found it on the map.
You found that one? Okay, well, I feel like there was another one. Oh, was it South Lake?
Yeah, yeah, South. South Lake Trail twenty nine.
Yep, and then I think your question was about access from, was it from the west side? That you were asking about, if you can access it? So Southwick is just north of the Mullen Road Habitat. Let's see, and that brings us to the parks planning areas. Yeah, we can, we can actually go through this one. I don't have any suggested changes in this section. Um, but curious if any board members do. So as you know, it goes through each planning area, gives an explanation of what it consists of, what the population is like, um, existing recreational opportunities. Goes through, uh, parks needs and conditions assessment, and then, um. The needs that are listed here, if at a shorter term, they'll be on the Parks Capital Improvement Program. So you've kind of got the narrative in this section, and you've got the, the numbers and the list in that other section, so that's how that works. Um, so if you wanna just quickly flip through this one, Sarah? I like the way the maps got updated, so that you kind of see a little bit of what's around them too. Uh, if you noticed that from the last version, they were pretty dark.
Yeah.
So we had them light, lighten those up a little bit, that was kind of nice.
So are these gonna be added? So is Arbor's Park gonna be added to this one?
Yes, we need to add Arbor's Park everywhere.
Okay.
I was gonna say, there are things I missed, cause this is twenty nine, and then I have thirty two on the big map, and I think we had X, right?
We have thirty six. Forgotten to update the, uh, the exhibit.
The big one?
Uh, no, that one.
Yeah, cause it doesn't have the green belt on here.
Oh, yeah, so, sorry, so that one, I think only the ones that are like open to the public are listed on that one.
Oh, okay.
And Arbor's Park is. Oh, she's gonna make it after you. Okay, and then, let's see. All right, the. Sarah, what's the next section that you have there?
Um, so this is the last section, section seven, and then we just have the appendices, which are just.
Okay, so can you go up to, um. The longer term, the twenty thirty to twenty forty two, I think it's the last page.
Yes.
Where you get to the appendices.
It is, come back here.
So this is one thing that's on our homework, so. Yeah, okay, so in here, we talked about the implementation, um, actions, and we're gonna go to the. So actually, we're gonna insert that spreadsheet, the Parks Capital Improvement Program, right here. Um, so this would be page one fifty eight on yours. Yep, so she's got that. So we'll insert that. We talked about the near-term priorities to satisfy demand and need. And then this long, under the longer term, if you go to the next page, Sarah. Um, under acquisition, it's down there at the very bottom. It says, it says Lacey will consider acquisitions when a deficit has been identified and property and funding are available, so pursue. Explore acquisition of community parkland for Patterson Lake Public Access, so that's what we talked about before. And then parkland in, so these areas here. And then parkland in, so these areas here, it should read Tanglewild, or it should read um, Hox Prairie is right, Meadows is correct. It shouldn't say Wonderwood.
I was like, what's around Wonderwood that isn't already a park?
Remove Wonderwood.
We need more.
And it should say um, Hox Prairie, Meadows, McAllister, Tanglewild, Thompson Place. It should match what's in the intro of the parks plan.
Yes.
So there was two different.
I see.
Um, so it should Tangle, Tangle Thompson Place um, and Pleasant Glade is actually listed as well. So that one's interesting because.
Isn't it part of the Great Kuyo Plan though?
Well, it's, it's the Pleasant Glade Planning Area, and so there, there is a little gap. Uh, right above the woodland planning area. But what's interesting is that the Great Kuyo and the Pleasant Glade and the Palm Head Waters is so big.
Yeah.
That almost makes up for it, but if you're looking at that point five mile radius.
It's going to change it.
Yeah, it, so I think that to be consistent, we should probably include it in there in case there was something else that became available. It may be way, way down the road. This is the longer term. Okay. Um.
Who came up with that list?
What?
The acquisition list.
Oh, the acquisition, okay, so the reason is because if there is a section that has a park desert, a city park desert. So that's where we, that's where it ties into that um, the service area map.
Those are the areas where there's a desert.
Yes, those are the areas, but um, I guess, so that's why it's under the longer term, because. As we look at the map with other parks and school district facilities on there, we see that that starts to close the gaps a little bit. And so um, you know, if you're strictly though, looking at the city's level of service, which is to have.
Yeah.
A park within point five mile radius of every res, Parker Trail within point five mile radius.
Yeah.
Then that's what we're looking at to indicate those deficiencies.
Yeah, because I think Meadows just has like an HOA little park next to a full elementary school.
So it makes it easier to see where, which planning areas we do have more parks in.
And there's so much property too.
Okay, um, Sarah, that's all the sections you said?
Yes, that's all the sections that I have, and then it goes into the appendices, but those are preborn.
Okay, great. Um, alright, so let's look at, if you want to stop share, I want to. Make sure everyone's on the same page with the um. PCIP, and that was in your packet. Um, there was, oops. Put that, oh, I know. Sorry. I want to do this, okay. Share my screen. So there, uh, there was a copy of this, but it was, it was kind of small and hard to read, so we made it look nicer and. You know, did some, did some colors and kind of more separation here, so I'm going to blow this up a little bit. Okay, so basically, these are rough estimates only, and this is. Uh, what it states in the narrative part of the plan is that these are subject to change based on funding opportunities. But what this does is gives us a look at what the next six years could look like. Trying to move that guy. Um, so basically, um, you know, we've got the indoor, indoor pool and playground, and since that is, uh, I mean, the current. Current concept is working with the, as you know, the youth, the young child family center, and it talks about the need and that project and the narrative of the, the plan. Um, but for an indoor pool and playground, um, you know, we could enter into a partnership, these are. Funding sources, so potential funding sources are listed out. And then it says TBD because this project is the, you probably will recall, it's the seventy million dollar. Project that the school district has property, which is four million of that, uh roughly. That's the Bucknell or the Squali site, and so really, um, it's really to be determined on what different partners would bring to the table. So that's why that one is listed as TBD. Um, and then, as you know, there's been a. Lot of requests for spray parks, so Spray Park number one could be in conjunction with that project. And we did go ahead and identify um, the amount that it would cost. And then there is, there's four percent inflation, just the way things have been going lately for each year. Um, and for the, and then we did add M and O here, and the reason we did these on separate lines is so that we can sort if we want to and pull different data sets out.
What does M and O mean?
Um, so that's maintenance and operation.
That makes sense.
Because as we know, it's one thing to build something, but we wouldn't put something in that we couldn't afford to, to keep up, right? And so, so we do, so the M and O is actually an increase of two percent as you go across, and that's noted at the bottom of this spreadsheet. So, you know, potential spray parks in different areas of Lacey. Which the public has expressed interest in, um, and then, you know, we've got Great Kuyo Park listed here, Phase One A obviously is. Already on its way, um, but Future Phase is listed here, Next Phase. And we also broke out whenever we needed to, Planning and Design, which is roughly twenty percent we'd like to budget for, yes.
Right, back to the spray parks, are there locations identified for those already, or?
Um, you know, so there's, there's ideas, um. One of the things that would be really great is to put spray parks in different areas of Lacey.
Yeah.
And so, these are, these are in order of when we did the survey of where people would like to see them. And so, of course, this is all subject to change, but we wanted to, to put that in, uh. To show that we're listening and, you know, those could be potential, potential areas. Um, they would, you know, it'd have to be vetted by staff, uh, and the Parks Board, of course, if there was a location selected. Because you wouldn't want to put something in that didn't have adequate parking.
Yeah.
Right? To think of terms of, and also we'd look at what infrastructure is already there and what, you know, would be the most efficient thing to do. Um, yeah, with, so with Great Kuyo Park, in the near term, we only added, you know, one Next Phase. As we know, the Great Kuyo Park Master Plan is a twenty year plan, so there's going to be, you know, future phases, long term. Um. So we have Meridian Neighborhood Park, Meridian Campus North, so Meridian Neighborhood Park is partially developed. We've had a lot of input on what could go in there, pickleball courts, skate features, potentially a pump track. Um, we do know that the sports fields need to be developed out there still, there's room for them, they're just not, there's no funding yet.
It's a pump track.
It's in our definitions, so it's, um, so have you seen the one downtown Olympia? It's like, kind of like this, and so the idea is that you, if you're on a BMX bike.
Yeah.
You can kind of propel yourself.
Oh, I haven't seen that, okay. I mean, I know what you're talking about, but I didn't see it downtown.
Okay, so where they normally do the ice skating, seasonal ice skating, I think it's called Ismus Park.
Oh.
Not far from the fountain down there.
Yeah.
Um, they have a pump track, theirs is actually portable, I mean, it takes a lot of work to move it, but.
Oh, that's cool.
It's, it's something that folks are interested in, it's, you, you can also ride a scooter on it, inline skates.
Oh, cool.
Um, but sports fields, you know, we heard from the public to, to develop the fields that we have already have space for, right? Um, Meridian Campus North, as you know, it needs a master plan and a, uh, planning and design, and, and it's not developed yet. We're getting pinged more and more about that one, as, you know, families are moving into the area.
Yeah.
Uh, Long Lake Park, as you know, we were able to pick up that adjacent property, and so the master plan is very, very old for that park. It needs to be updated, so that's something that we see happening um. The next six years. William A. Bush Park, uh, the playground needs replacement.
Wow, three hundred fifty thousand dollars to replace a playground? I didn't realize they were so expensive.
Yep.
That's like, I can get some bogos, can I buy one playground and get one free? I'm so glad we have them. How long do they, how long do they typically last, a little playground?
Well, they're typically under warranty for fifteen years, and so it's pretty great, because then the parks can get replaced, so, for example. Um, but then the city, I mean, we, we just go through and replace them. Um, they typ, will typically have them longer than fifteen years, I mean, some are twenty, twenty-five. Um, we are going to be getting a better conditions assessment, as you saw in the policy section. Um, so that we can put like ratings on and, and have a better plan for replacement.
Yeah.
But, for example, if it's out of warranty, it can cost like ten thousand dollars to replace a slide. For example, if a slide breaks, and so it's really nice when they're under warranty.
Yeah.
So, and also they get upgraded for safety.
Yeah.
Requirements as, as the, the newer ones go in. Um, Brooks Park needs a master plan and potentially some amenities, it's just a patch of grass. Um, Lacey Museum and Cultural Center is on here, uh, developing, we have a master plan already and a design. And the community, the reason no money is carried over at this point is because the community is currently fundraising for that project. Um, Rainier Vista. Actually putting in a budget request for, I think I, I mentioned last meeting, the football, ball court expansion and outdoor table tennis. Um, it's going to need a playground replacement, and we have it under. Twenty-eight as a placeholder? I think that if. Funding can be identified, some of these that need playground replacements, and there could potentially be a location for a water feature. We could look at a combination potentially.
That's what I would like, I'd like to do one of those, you do a playground equipment with the water park in it, that would be awesome. Then you can have it during the winter be.
Non-water.
And then turn the water on during the summer.
That's cool.
Yeah, yeah, it's like a two for one, that's a bogo, or a wogo, win one, give one. Bogo, wogo, I don't know, but that would be awesome to do something like that. And that's a very, very sunny location. It's not, like, Wonderwood would not be a good. So have they triaged what they, I mean, have we gone through to triage what we're going to focus on? It's like the pump, the, the dock, I mean, that's a safety hazard, right?
Yeah, so, yep, so, um, yep, so this list, that's a great question. This list is really a combination of, you know, what the public would like to see, and not all the funding is identified for it, and there's also, there's also. Items that have to be replaced, right? So, so myself and Parks Maintenance, we did our best to identify everything that's coming up. And, and then look at what's in the next six years and what's going to have to just wait. Um, and also it's important to note that if we're going to apply for Recreation and Conservation Office funding. It needs to be in here, under the six-year plan, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, so for example, this is potentially, um, this. Rainier Vista, oh. Yes, this one, this is a potential, the grant cycle is twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-six, it's every two years for SEO. So this is one I'm going to start here really soon, looking into, like, here's the estimate, it's a lot, right? Is this something that we can apply for? Um, grant funding, so I just have to look into like what we've done historically at the site, et cetera. Um.
Because I like, but I want to make sure people are safe, I think safety is kind of like, I'd like to have things, the dock is.
Yeah, so the dock.
Bridge for the Woodland Creek.
Yes.
Yeah, safety is important.
Yes, for sure. Yeah, so, uh, and then Woodland Creek.
What's the food forest?
Oh, so you wouldn't know because you're a newer Parks Board member, yeah, so we.
Under Woodland Creek.
Yeah, here we go, so. Um, so the Parks Board made a community gardens policy, so that it would be possible if there was the right proposal. That it could go through Parks Board and get approved to have a community garden, um, at certain sites.
Yeah.
And so, Rainier, or um, Woodland Creek Park is one of those sites, and we have a design for. Or a concept design for a one acre part, um, community garden, food forest. And so we were working with a nonprofit group toward that, and they ended up backing out for now. And so it didn't continue coming through to the Parks Board, but.
Is it like a native plant food forest?
There would be native plants, so um, it, it would depend on the nonprofit organization, so the city doesn't have the. Resources to operate it, so that's where nonprofit could come in.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, so the group we were working with was, and still are in contact, is Hackee, um, Farmers Collective, so they. Promote black and brown farmers, um, yeah, and they're actually currently running the site over at the Food Bank.
Oh, cool.
And so they would have a lot of say in what goes in there, but the idea of a food forest is that it's self-sustaining.
Yeah.
So it's like nuts, fruits, and berries.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but they definitely would want some like hands-on children stuff and.
Yeah.
So it's still a really exciting project that could be in the works, um, and the city does have some funding. The city has agreed to fund the first three years of water, and also there's some money for um, initial irrigation.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I did, I did con- continue to keep it in here.
Yeah.
Um, in case it moves forward, so.
I, that made me think when we were on our Great Kuyo tour, there's. A lot of. I mean, just so much plant, so many native plants in that area. It made me wonder if something's, maybe not as cultivated as this one sounds, but an opportunity for like. Promoting those food, those native foods, so that foragers can come in and get their ferns and their nettles and their berries and their. Whatever, but. I don't know if that had been brought up with Great Kuyo.
Um, so Great Kuyo Park has a one acre placeholder in the longer term plan for. Community, some type of community garden.
Oh, cool.
It also has space for demonstration garden. At some point, I'll show you, well, you can look at the, the master plan, it's pretty big, but we can, we can look at that, um, once we have time at one of our meetings.
Okay.
Look at potentials for future for that. Um, sports facilities partnerships, so there is um, some of the, the. Um, well, sorry, my words. On the city council work plan, so part of the input for this is also city council's work plan, and so they have asked us to work with. Community stakeholders to advance some of the sports partnerships. And so there's a potential baseball stadium, we've been working with St. Martin's University, and so this is something where some of. Some community and economic development dollars would go toward a project like that, um, to make a cool opportunity. Um, the potential is a wood bat league coming to Lacey. And that would provide, you know, they play, it's a collegiate level play, of play, they stay with host families in the area, and. Uh, the West Coast League has shown some interest in coming to Lacey, and so it would be like kind of a family-friendly opportunity during the summer for people to go to. And so, also economic development, right, we bring people in, they spend money here. So that one's on there, indoor sports facility, um, for those of you that are newer, we have. Done a feasibility study, phases one and two back in twenty eighteen, um, which showed that a indoor sports facility is needed, and as we know, people want indoor opportunities. So this would be an opportunity again to potentially pitch in some funding for a partner to run something like that.
Like a gym, and some indoor courts or something like that.
The rack, there's a lot. Here, this is our premier uh, sports complex, and with that comes a lot of M and O and replacement. So I don't know if anybody has any questions. About this, but we obviously staggered some of the projects that need replacement.
Do baseball fields or stadiums, are they very useful for other things, or can you really only play baseball and softball? On baseball?
Well, um. You can do concerts. Um. Sometimes at the rack. Uh, I mean, you can do dog shows, you can do other events.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, and we actually use the outfield's, the baseball outfield's for soccer practices during the winter.
Yeah.
Too, so. Um, one of the things I want to point out here is the Phase Three Planning and Design, so that's the property that's across Marvin Road. From the rack, it's twenty-six acres, and so, um.
It's like the, the farm. I can look it up on that.
Who bought?
Yeah, it's open space.
What the mushroom farm?
Uh.
It got burned.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They what?
They're selling, um.
Sure did.
Ostroms is selling to a developer, but it hasn't, it's not official yet, to my knowledge.
Housing?
Uh huh, it's single-family housing. Or wait. Is it multi?
Well, I think so.
I have to check. I have to check on that one, I'll let you know. Um. But Phase Three, so right now, what we're, you'll see that the PFD, the Public Facilities District is listed here, so. What we're doing right now, and you got this update with the rack financial plan, but we're looking into extending the current PFD. Um, to see if we can't uh, get that Phase Three developed and add to the complex. Karen Fraser, Kate, Karen Fraser, Woodland Trail, we talked about the Phase Three acquisition earlier. Um we also want to, these are, uh this was at the request of Economic Development. We want to come up with a trail corridor master plan, and that's why CED is listed here to look at connecting more businesses to the trail. Or other points of interest, little, little trail connections.
Yeah, that's nice.
And then the McKinney House, I think we talked about this one before, did we not? This, this one's on the Historical Commission work plan. But it's just trying to see what we can do in that space.
Buying a big blue tarp over the roof.
Those definitely need something like that. Uh Midtown or Huntermore Park um is definitely gonna need a playground replacement, uh there is a.
The climbing rocks?
Yeah, they're, they're starting to really wear out, we might have to remove one of them, if they keep wearing it as they are, but. There is going to be a project that's adjacent to the park, and we can look at um. Potentially doing some upgrades along with that development project, so I'm gonna stay in close contact with community and economic, economic development. To find out timing for that, but I definitely wanted to put a placeholder in here. Um Home and Park, we're having an issue with some tree wells, um. It's kind of an interesting dilemma, but some large trees have. When they were smaller, there's, there was pavement put around the trees, have you been to Home and? And so now, as the trees are getting bigger, it's gonna become a problem, so we're gonna have to look at renovating that, it's kind of a picnic area that's around those trees.
So it's causing cracks and bumps in the cement.
By the bathrooms, or is it?
It's by the bathrooms, yeah, behind the bathrooms, yep, if, if you're ever out in that area or at the park, just go take a look, um.
Is there an option that?
It's a tripping hazard?
Yeah.
It's not a, it's not a tripping hazard, but basically the trees are gonna outgrow the holes that they're in.
Why did we put holes?
I don't know.
You did that? Home and Park, I don't think of it.
Yeah, um Thornberry is gonna need a playground replacement, so we have it scheduled in a future year, um and then the Virgil S Clarkson Senior Center. So there is a Phase Three. In a concept format, um so the, the senior center was built, and then it was added on to in twenty thirteen, I wanna say. And there is a, there is a Phase Three, we started kinda talking about it before COVID, but then, haven't since then. That's something that may come up and may be eligible for uh CDBG funding, that's how they expanded it before. So we've got a placeholder in there for that one. Along with potential parking lot expansion for that. Parking is an issue in general over at Woodland Creek Park, that's where the community center is, that's where the senior center is, that's where the junior disc golf courses. There's playgrounds, there's picnic shelters, and when there's rentals at the community center, especially during the summer, and a lot of people are playing disc golf, it's crowded. Parking is, it's a very busy park site, uh so we're gonna need to look at parking eventually, uh Lacey Depot Park, we. Safeway. It's true. Um Lacey Depot, there is a potential to do a parking lot expansion, basically, there's twenty stalls. West of the depot across Lebanon Street, and the city owns the property continuing west, and so we, in the. Master plan, there's another twenty spaces that we can, we can put in, it's just a matter of. Asking for the funding and. Fitting it into the project schedule, so there's definitely, as popularity grows over there and the food truck plaza. Is happening and all the market events, there's definitely a need for parking over there, so. Um, yeah, so any questions on the PCIP? I do believe that's all we have, let me just check our to-do list real quick. You did. Did it.
You got six minutes to spare.
So, are there any questions for the commissioners at this time? Mr. Wheeler, that I'm here on still.
Sorry, I was talking to my family about dinner, uh what was the question?
Sounds good.
Do you have any questions about what you've seen in the comprehensive plan?
It's very comprehensive.
I have a question about the. The local area history, um. Where we talk about the history of the coast Salish people, do we have like a tribal, does the city have a tribal liaison or someone that? Has reviewed cases where we talk about sort of the, the Native American history and how we represent it?
We do, um yeah, so our museum curator um does a great job of um interfacing, she's got a couple of different contacts. And has them proof of information, um the other thing to mention is that our commission equity is coming up with the land acknowledgement. Policy, and it's something that's ready yet, we were hopeful that it would be, um but there'll be, there'll be a policy on how we reflect that. I think that there's a page that's left blank and we do the acknowledgement, so that'll be standard for all city documents, it's just not quite ready for this. That was my question. So if, if the board is willing to recommend as amended, just knowing all the changes that we talked through would be made. We'd be grateful for a.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as uh. What? Amended, yeah, that's the word.
Or the plan?
The comprehensive.
The comprehensive plan is amended.
So I need a, so that's what you're doing, I need a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three Lacey Park Culture and Recreation Comprehensive Plan.
As amended.
As amended.
Yeah, that was my motion.
I second. Moved and seconded, is there any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor of the twenty twenty-three Lacey Parks Culture and Recreation Comprehensive Plan, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Majority says aye, the motion carries, congratulations.
Hey, well, I look forward to letting you know how the rest of the process goes, feel free to watch any of the meetings, I'll just keep you posted. Um also, as you saw, we're gonna be emailing out that emergency action plan, it, it made its way through the review for, um from police. But still needs to be approved by our safety coordinator of the city, so we'll email that out to you all.
Okay.
And we look forward to seeing some of you, most of you at the event, since we don't have a July meeting.
Yeah, so our next meeting's in August. Yeah, and then Commissioner Wheeler will be, are you performing, right, or you're doing?
No, I'm just, I'm just the MC.
Oh, you're gonna perform too, I'm putting it out, I'm telling everybody, there's gonna be a commissioner performing on stage and.
I could do a little jig or something if you'd like, but I don't, I don't know. You guys need to invest in like one of those really long like hooks, you know, that you can like grab me and drive me off.
And are we gonna have a booth at the third of July?
Um so.
Any of us need to be at that?
So. We will have a booth, um so what Jeanette said is she just wants everybody to come and attend, but you don't have an assignment for the first. Oh, I.
We have parking passes, right?
It's my office, so who still needs one?
I'll take one.
I, I need one. Yeah, if you can, if you can like just put the pass with like the packet, like the, that was put together right by.
Yes, okay, and did you, you already got one, right, Commissioner?
I've, I've got family.
Okay, so um Commissioner, don't leave yet.
Outside of Pullman.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay, thank you, um okay, so, and oh, one more thing I wanted to say, sorry.
Okay, we can adjourn.
Commissioner Wheeler, your.
Yeah, I've heard about that.
Your term.
Does, yeah.
Yeah, so we're gonna see what applications come in. Another term if you don't get applicants, but you guys know of anybody who wants to apply for Parks Board?
Yeah, you'd ask, and you're gonna stuck with me.
Oh, his term is gonna expire in August.
He gets another one if he wants.
Um he can, if there's no qualified applicants, I think it's within a month. Of his term ending, then. The council could, or the mayor could recommend for another term, for a third term.
Okay.
So we'll see how it shakes out.
All right, are there any other agenda items before, or any questions, concerns before we leave? No, before adjourn? Hey, everyone have a wonderful Fourth of July, be safe, travel safe, stay hydrated, don't fall out of your boat. Okay, well, I'm not saying you consume, I'm just saying don't fall out of your boat. All right, everybody have a wonderful evening, it is seven thirty PM, and we are adjourning our meeting, have a great one.
Yeah, for guys, take care.
Thanks, everyone, good night.
Thank you for all your work, Sarah.